This is a meeting of the Altoona Area School Board. Please stand for Mota Sanz.
To the United States of America, in the Republic of Christians, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're good now. Okay. Um, okay, we had an executive session for the purpose of personnel and we talked a little bit about real estate. So we're going to go ahead and move on to roll call, please.
Mrs. Breen here. Mr. Brennan.
Here.
Mr. Segler.
Here.
Mr. Francis. Mr. Hippo.
Here.
Mr. Hoover.
Here.
Mrs. Erwin Adams here. Mr. Johnston.
Here.
Mr. Cruz.
Here.
All right, well, go ahead and we have special presentations, national merit and scholarships.
Mr. Brennan and Dr. Free Town can join us if they want to. Tonight we recognize two Altoona senior students for their selection as a committed student in the National Merit Scholarship Program. Commended students are recognized for their exceptional academic promise demonstrated by their performance on the qualifying test. Approximately 1.5 million students took the 2018 preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test last October. In April, the top 50,000 students are recognized. Thirty-four thousand of those are committed students with a balance of 16,000 students that are sent by finalists. So I want you to join me this evening in congratulating Abigail Arabak. Arabak.
Congratulations.
And Addison Birchfield. I get Mr. Millian too as well.
What's that?
Mr. Neal. That was a hard test.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a couple of verbal additions to attend to.
Two, three items. One is back. Was it back? It's back table. I'd say we will be adding Mark Frye as a volunteer girl soccer coach effective 2019-20 school year. Then we are adjusting the pay rate for, for the starting rate for substitute custodians to $10 an hour, which will increase to $11 an hour after 90 working days. And then finally, we are adjusting our RN rate. Our LPNs and our RNs. Uh, LPNs are going from 1906 an hour to 1956 an hour. RNs are going to 22.27 an hour to 22.77 an hour. Those will be, um, except for personnel items. The other two will be in the consent agenda.
All right, so now we'll have hearing from citizens. Citizens who would like to speak have five minutes to step up to the mic and speak. They need to state their full name, their address, and the annual tenure of their school district. So would anyone like to speak? Then we go to the faculty and practice online. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to board reports. Our time is up for board.
I'd like to congratulate the winner and the runner-up in the District Six Tennis Championships. Give me those names again. Please also get them correct.
Gordon Stevens was the runner-up and Alyssa Ringer was the champion of singles tennis last week.
Now, Stevens, she will be, she's a freshman, but a senior.
Yes.
And Stevens will be in a doubles competition this week.
Yes, and double, uh, triple A double starts tomorrow in Manchester Park at 10 a.m.
Okay, so congratulations to those who are late and congratulations and good luck with the rest of the season. A couple of things, I don't want to steal the thunder again, laying on you at the table, but some nice, some good things been happening. Just want to mention Throwback Thursday. This year we celebrated Logan. Uh, the girls, the girls soccer team had senior night on Tuesday. The boys soccer team will have senior night.
It was last Wednesday.
It was Wednesday, sorry. I caught the Monday game, I didn't catch the Wednesday game. So a lot of our sports did a lot of great things with kids. Excellent job for the kids and the coaches.
Thank you. Everyone come in. All right, um, this time ticks down the final couple of months and then you can add my classes here. I find myself reflecting a lot on what's happened over the last four years. Prior to starting on the school board, I probably filmed a similar cookie cutter as everyone else. Why do we have four principals in secondary schools? How could we graduate 1,000 kids in the 60s and struggle with capacity today? What's with this new math stuff anyhow? It doesn't take much digging to find these answers. Principals don't just discipline nowadays. They have litany paperwork they're required to personally address. Even more regulations they need to make sure their staff observes and all the while they're expected to keep themselves and their staff up to date with the latest educational methods. As a matter of fact, I heard through the grapevine that one of our principals came to work early Easter Sunday before church and had paperwork stretched out across his office. On the graduate front, we now have a slew of special education requirements along with local and non-local code requirements. We even have additional space in our schools. In addition, we offer more classes and an educational program that addresses today's jobs, not just the entry level jobs of the past. Businesses no longer want to spend endless hours training employees. When we implemented every day math, I argued with a tooth and nail. Finally, after being given a foot tall stack of books to take home and read, I learned that many of the items covered were simply concepts and tricks that my generation learned earlier in algebra and calculus, or I'm sorry, or earned later in algebra and calculus. Not everyone took those classes, so the idea might seem foreign or, you know, odd, but certainly not out of line. In short, the world around us changes and we're charged with adapting to it every day, probably more so than any other organization. You also learn about the gritty side of things too. From the comfort of my home, I always viewed bullying as an elementary school thing. For my first three years of school, I was the little round kid who couldn't hit a baseball to save his life. Being on the board, not only have I learned that bullying extends through the secondary levels, but is probably even more dominant amongst our adult population. Elementary students step back at the notion they're going to go to the principal's office. Adults simply thumb their noses, wave their First Amendment banners and regardless of how it reflects upon themselves and the organizations they represent. Of course, we have our beloved teachers. At one point in life, I subscribed to the notion that you just need a good teacher. Then I saw how our teachers were cobbling together lessons from PDFs they found online because their books dated back to the 80s, 70s, even 60s. Not only, um, our teachers are, are our teachers at a disadvantage, but our kids would struggle as well. I'm all for being frugal, but replacing 1963 books in 2019 isn't frugal, it's irresponsible. Effectively, we've assembled our army of teachers and sent them into combat with cracked muskets and watered down powder. Then we wonder why cutting edge businesses struggle to locate here. So what have we done over the last four years? Under our superintendents and the new strangers administrators' leadership, we've taken long strides in rebuilding our curriculum from the ground up. Instead of using the old dazzle readers, our children are learning with leveled reading approach, giving them the opportunity to grow instead of simply sinking or swimming. Any school director who's done their homework should be able to talk competently on the topic and will certainly agree. At the moment, we boast around 19 AP courses and secondary class sizes designed to make one-to-one interaction with teachers far more manageable. On the elementary side of things, because we're moving sixth grade up, we have more space to decrease elementary class sizes and make them more manageable as well. We have also instituted measures to promote safety and wellness amongst our students. We have a positive climate committee addressing issues such as bullying and peer pressure. Our board has an outreach committee designed to foster a closer relationship with folks like teachers, students, and local stakeholders. We also have a police force who has worked closely with local law enforcement and our administration to make our schools as safe as they can be. Our administration and even our board have reached out to legislators in order to advocate for our public school system and address issues that cause strain on our local taxpayers. For example, this past week, four of our board members, myself, Mr. Hoover, Mrs. Adams, and Mr. Johnston, took time away from work to attend the governor's discussion about the outdated 1980s era charter laws that cost the district and its taxpayers in excess of $3 million a year. Yes, by the way, the governor came here, not to Hollisburg, not to State College, not even to Pittsburgh. He came to Altoona, Pennsylvania to talk about charter reform. That puts us on the state radar. It puts eyes on Altoona for advice in addressing matters such as these. Some of us have also reached out to legislators about our concerns with PISers, starting with the contribution level of around $3 million in 2011, I believe, and jumping to $17.9 million in 2019. That accounts for 16% of our budget, thereabouts. In 2011, our district was able to put $5.5 million into our bank account. Every year after that, the amount dropped like a rock until 2015 where the outgoing amount exceeded the incoming. In 2017, we removed $4 million, about, from our funds to cover the year's expenses. This trend can, can simply be seen by holding our audits. Anybody can do it. Could things have been done to increase our revenue along the way? Absolutely, and they should have been. But we can't change the shortsightedness of the past. We can only look towards the future. We can implement revenue generation efforts such as more effectively using our facilities along with implementing sponsorships and fundraising opportunities. We can streamline processes. For example, our administration now uses On Hands for student data and our school board uses Board Docs, both aimed at minimizing the cost of paper, ink, storage, and staff hours. All wasted costs with today's technology. One of the biggest efforts from the last four years and the most debated of our none has been the building project. In 2013, the district closed not one but two elementary schools, causing our remaining schools to cannibalize every nook and cranny to educate our kids. We lost library spaces, computer labs, art rooms, large group rooms, copy rooms, and yes, even closets. At the same time, one of the two schools that all of our kids must attend, the high school, began to cause us a small fortune to maintain. Utility systems failed, the brick facade needed bolted back into the wooden structure of the building, and we constantly faced water issues. Instead of continuing to allow our kids to learn in an environment where sewage backing up in 40-degree classrooms were not surprising events, we decided to put them in a healthy facility specifically designed for today's educational needs. After all, B building was erected when planes were the new thing and half of its classrooms don't even meet PDE's minimum size requirements. Now, a few days ago, I was asked why I wanted to be on the board in the first place and whether it was worth it. The first part of the answer is simple. I believe that ultimately the woes of our community won't be rectified by the Boomers or Gen X. After all, we allowed this situation to evolve and fester. I believe that ultimately it will be the millennials and especially the I generation who will right the ship. Of course, we're doing our part in the process. We're gambling on their potential. But if there's one thing we've learned over the last 20 years, it's that we can no longer sit back and wish upon a star hoping that all of the jobs will just reappear in our community. We have to invest in our strongest commodity, commodity, our people, most specifically our youth. So at the end of the day, was everything worth it? Were the extra hours that diligent board members put into touring our facilities and sitting down with our staff trying to understand their concerns worth it? Was the constant harassment on social media, internet cowards, as Mr. Francis, I completely agree with you when you say that, has noted before, was that worth it? Was the toll on our work, our health, and our family lives worth it? In the last four years, we've produced, and we saw some here tonight, we've produced students with national level educational recognition. We've won engineering competitions without having a fully fledged engineering program in place. We've seen our student athletes get full rides to DMO colleges and have the ability to rise above the status that they were born into. Altoona is on the rebound and our students will play a major role in the community's revitalization and sustainability. So was it with, was it worth it? You're darn skippy it was. When I reflect back on these last few years, last four, I will reflect on these guys down there. Hi. And they will take us over, they, they will take everything over the next 20 years and be able to mold it within the best of their ability. I look forward to seeing an Altoona that has regained its former self and shines across the state. Thank you. We'll move on to the next report. Athletic Council. Mr. Rickiels.
We're in the process of planning an Athletic Council meeting coming up either the 22nd of October or an alternate date.
Do you have anything to add, Mr. Hippo?
The only thing I would add is I know and more should be aware that there are, uh, should be a CBRC presentation at that meeting. And those are bad dates for me. And as much as Kelly is the CBRC alternate, whatever we can do, I want to make sure Kelly's invited. So at least our CBRC representation is there. We'll try to coordinate with as many board members as we can. That's fair, I guess, to the committee first, but that's not the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Hapford.
Thank you.
Moving on to Steve Herstein.
Steve Herstein's going to be making a presentation. There is also, uh, and for my pastor, we're fortunate to recall that the city has funded through CNDG and the CMMR CNDG and the CNIR grant a comprehensive plan that is finally in place. And the kickoff for that study is this week, either Wednesday or Thursday. The board will do an overall comprehensive analysis of programming, of assets and facilities, the entire structure of how we address recreation between Altoona, the Logan Township, and the school district. So those are exciting times, and hopefully the board will set the speed on helping sort that progress as well. One other thing I want to point out is I had some residents contacting me about Hammond Park, thinking it was a CBRC issue. There are a lot of trees marked up there that are supposedly either coming down or being trimmed. I had honestly told them I didn't know anything about it from CBRC because it wasn't a CBRC initiative. I checked with my co-founder, and he confirmed, he confirmed about it. I reached out to Councilman Kabel, who's the CBRC representative, and very diligent. Eric has gotten back to me that that is a city. For people wondering about the trees out there, there is a city initiative trimming a lot of those for public health and public safety issues. They're not all coming down, and they're going to do a better job of getting the report out about that to CBRC in the future. So that's all I have.
Thanks. Education.
We had our first education meeting of the year on September nineteenth. Some of the things we discussed were, I had asked for kind of an overview of the high school academic tract and how kids are weighted. We talked about our elementary cyber school program, and that goes along with the presentation by Governor Wolf this week. Kudos to Dr. Prietal, Callowman, Jim Abbott, everybody else who played a role in getting the governor here for his visit. I thought that was productive, and it was great to have such great representation from across the board. What did we have, like twelve to fifteen superintendents from different schools that came to Logan to hear what the governor had to say and kind of speak on behalf of the issues that we're encountering with cyber school and the amount of money that we are paying out. And we don't necessarily feel that they're getting the same education that they would if they were going through our program. We also talked about the new initiative at Penn Lincoln. One of the highlights from that from this week, or I guess at the end of last week, they had a live stream of the Penn Lincoln announcements. Kudos to Chris Cashati for helping to pull that together. And we have a girls' STEM Day coming up soon at the junior high and high school. So I think that covers a majority of it.
Thank you, ma'am. Facilities.
Our last facility meeting was on the fifteenth of August. We had Gary come in and talk to us about the progress of the schools, the construction, and change orders. Russ came in, Russ Greaser from Stiphol McGraw came in to talk to us about the ADA restroom design out at Mansion Park. Dave Albright was there to talk about the renovations at the ISB. Full renovation project is done, the pool is full, and we're using it. Logan softball dugouts are complete. Roof repairs at Penn Lincoln were complete, and the final inspection was done. Testing for lead drinking water, Baker, had Baker, W.J., Kimmel, and Junior out of the gap were tested this time around, and everything was good except for one faucet. Mansion Park painting was completed. Ebner roof, there was undiagnosed leaks still remaining. Penn Lincoln, the energy-saving project was almost complete at that time. It's now complete. Replacement of some kitchen equipment, the upgrades to the kitchen over here at B A Building. New stormwater inlet was installed at Logan. It was, the old one was collapsing because of the bus traffic running over it, and we discussed some tree removal throughout the district. Also, the next facility meeting is on October seventeenth. We're having a tour of the building project at five p.m., and the meeting will be at six p.m. afterwards.
Where are you planning a meeting for the tour?
We're going to meet right here. Just meet in my office. Or you want to meet right here at the board?
Well, there were people there, so we'll meet here, so.
Meet in the board.
All right. Finance Committee, Mrs. Brink.
We have not had a finance meeting since our last board meeting, so there's nothing we should report.
Has there been any headway made with the deficit and finding materials in our budget that can be cut that won't affect education?
We are working on many different things. The administration is working on different things, coming up with ideas, but we don't know exactly where that's at right now. I don't have a number.
I was just looking for items, but the only thing I've heard thus far was I was given a screenshot of a post where there was a comment made about cutting administration.
Everything is on the table.
All right. Moving on to IU eight. Mr. Hoover.
IU eight, we had a meeting on the twenty-eighth. Always liked the IU eight. They had a presentation, a short film. It showed all the good work they do with kids with disabilities. They're still doing good work. Liked to go because they cater it by Lena's, always nice. I was interested. I went into my meeting this week, and sitting beside me was my former boss from the prison system. That was interesting. So IU eight continues to do great work. They talked about the need for ADA compliance with the kids they work with. Good organization, great people, love going to those meetings. I'm going to move on to outreach.
All right, Ed.
All right, outreach. Dave, I'm going to clear this with you first. I'm going to try to meet later this month with the students this month, and then next month I would like to meet with the teachers again, if that's all right with you. Do you have any availability during the day, or do you want me to coordinate with that?
If you need help.
All right. I usually like to meet with the students around ten o'clock. So I'll get with Mr. Hatch. If that works for you, I'll get ahold of you. And I'm going to meet with the teachers in November, if that's called.
I'd like to meet with the custodial staff, just to see what they have.
Absolutely. Do you want to set that up in my meeting?
You can set it up.
All right, we'll do. Hold on, I'll give you a call. That's it for IU eight, all right.
Thank you, sir. For the SPAM, Mr. Johnston.
Yes. Republicans and Democrats vote agree students need more trade school opportunities. College isn't for any, college isn't for everybody. Also, according to the Learning Policy Institute, two thousand eighteen, U.S. has had a shortage of one hundred and twelve thousand teachers.
Thank you.
So also in that, with the PSP update, with the shortage of teachers, now they've got to go with importing teachers from other countries.
Great. We used that one. All right. Go to policy, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, Mr. President. We had a policy meeting here in the room on October first, and it was well-attended, and thank you.
Public library. Let me see here, I'm going to have to scroll through this. Jennifer had planned on being here, but she got held up. Okay, so, public library. The library had like to report that it has several high school English students come over to get library cards and check items out. These items aren't just books. Libraries aren't the same as they were whenever we were younger. They've evolved, and some of the things that they can rent out from the library are mobile hotspots. Well, anybody can rent out, as long as we have our library cards. Mobile hotspots, you can use eBooks. They have a variety of services over there that people can use, get online. And so it's well worth checking out, and they have seen an increase in folks in general coming in to get library cards recently, so that's a good thing. Tonight is the first session of What a Disaster. This is targeting thirteen- to eighteen-year-olds exploring some of the worst disasters mankind has known. The used book sale is October twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-eighth during normal library hours. On the night of October twenty-fourth, there will be a preview of the book sale open to Friends of the Library members. So if you're a member of Friends of the Library, you can get in there a little bit early before everybody else and don't have to, don't have to roll on in there to beat the crowd. That's all we have for the library. So we'll go ahead and go to technology. Mr. Rieck.
Technology Committee, that on October three, Bryce handed me a quick meeting, the fresh off the printer notes, so that may be distributed to the board electronically as well. Just a quick update, the one-on-one program continues to thrive. The one-on-one program runs down from seventh, seventh grade to twelfth grade, all in Chromebooks, which is a pretty impressive accomplishment given the level of work, the number of students. Distribution is all had at the high school. We're continuing to tweak it at the junior high, noting that next year we'll be dealing with sixth graders as well. So that system hopefully will be even more efficient at the junior high level next year. But our one-to-one program is something we shall be proud of, getting Chromebooks in the hands on a one-on-one basis at a district this size, the whole way down to sixth grade, while maintaining our cost structure. Staffs to be accredited there with American Retail Regmenning to move to Chromebooks, and Bryce and his staff being among the most vigorous negotiators, we have not had a budget increase despite doubtful impact on one-to-one service. That's certainly something to be noted. Parents and guardians need to be reminded that there is opportunity to buy insurance from the twenty-five dollars on those Chromebooks, and that is available at the beginning of November. And Bryce, I'm assuming we're continuing to make progress on that.
Yes.
I think it's on October twenty-fifth. We just got something on October twenty-fifth, is that correct, or is it the beginning of
We may be shifting that date.
Okay.
Yeah.
The system upgrade is proceeding. The systems are running, old systems and new systems are running simultaneously. That seems to be going well, as is the installation of infrastructure on the new construction. I think we all should be proud of our teachers. We have nineteen Alton Area School District teachers who are now certified Google teachers on the technology level. Again, that's unheard of, and the teachers have really stepped up. I think the trainings there have been reasonably well-received, and they're doing an amazing job, and we've come a long way very quickly there as well. Mrs. Burling gave an elementary STEM update with dates, I think Kelly announced some of those. There was actually a STEM camp held this past summer with seventy students attending. It's a free event. I know we're trying to coordinate some things with Penn State Altoona on their summer programs as well. We received a report on CYO from Mr. Hatch. I believe there's seventy kids now at the high school level, thirty at the junior high, so we've cracked the three-digit number, and congratulations on that. The savings there are immense, and hopefully legislation will deal with additional savings. Let's see, we had a new hire, and Bryce was happy with that, although he reported on the E-rate update and the discount we were able to achieve there. It wound up being almost an eighty percent discount, and again, congratulations to Bryce there. Also, I want to commend Bryce publicly. He has been in TED Talk at the Computer Science Summit held on October sixteenth at the Black County Convention Center. And again, I can't stress enough how far our staff, our administration, and our teachers have brought technology short for the time. We didn't have a technology committees for this. And those who served up, I have seen the amazing amount of progress we've made, and Bryce to put us at the forefront, where the convention is going to be in Blair County. You're speaking at it, and Bryce was also elected the president of the board for the Pennsylvania Educational Technology Expo Conference. Altoona's become a leader in this area, and we need to stay on that because that's clearly where the future's heading, and so congratulations to the administration, and congratulations to Bryce over his leadership there. I'm extremely proud of everything that's happened with this committee and the partners who've made the great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we're moving on to student representative. The student.
So the first thing, the ASVAB is being offered at the high school tomorrow, Monday day, because it's like at ten o'clock in the morning. It would probably be a major incentive to any student who wants to take the ASVAB can take that tomorrow. Tomorrow night is also the homecoming skit and games night, so that's where the homecoming teams, that they prepare skits and they'll perform those and then compete in games. And that's two dollars for admission, and then you can vote for candidates and donate money into their hands, and all of that money that's raised throughout homecoming week is being donated to the human society. Then this Thursday is the homecoming dance at seven o'clock, and then the game is on this Friday as well. That's where they'll announce the winner of the game at halftime. And then next week, we have parent-teacher conferences on Tuesday at the junior high, and then on Friday, we have eighteenth from eight-thirty a.m. to eleven-thirty a.m. at the high school, and so students have off next Friday. The high school gangrama is next Tuesday, October fifteenth, and that's at seven in the auditorium. And then the final high school football game will be on Friday, October eighteenth, so that's next Friday, and it's a pink-out theme for breast cancer awareness one. And then just another thing that's happening within the high school and elementary schools, the languages, the language like Spanish, English, Spanish, French, and German, sorry. They have created this club between the seniors that are in languages and elementary students at Pleasant Valley, so I think it's fourth and the sixth graders. And starting next week, they're, these kids in the languages are going to be meeting with students once a week at Penn Lincoln, and they're going to be teaching them like the basics of the three different languages. And so it's, they've had, I think it was like a hundred and forty students from Pleasant Valley sign up to participate in this after-school language program. And so that's going to be going on in like three different sessions with each language throughout this whole year.
Thank you, ma'am. That's wonderful. All right. Let's see, here we have the minutes, nine, nine, nineteen. Drive a motion, please.
So, move.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover. Go out a second. Thank you, Mr. Francis. Any comments or questions?
I have a question. We had this on the agenda earlier. As of last night, around nine p.m., the minutes were not on the agenda, so I couldn't look them over. If they were, I don't know why, I couldn't see them because I couldn't pull them up last night. I also want to state that I went back through the minutes. On six-eleven, Dave, Sharon, Ron, and I said no to the feasibility study that approved the penning, but after that, we did approve a, we went back through the minutes, cleared back to them.
Any other questions? Approval of the minutes, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Go ahead and go to change orders. Go ahead and go to change orders. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mr. Hoover, allow a second. Thank you, Mr. Hippo.
Yep, Gary.
Actually, I got a couple of corrections on your board ten on the amounts. Change order number two oh one, that amount should be eight hundred and fifty dollars, not twelve hundred. That was one that was being renegotiated. Change order two oh three should be nine hundred and twenty-four dollars, not nine twenty-three. Make sure that one dollar's accounted for, that was a typo on my part. Repeat. And then change order two oh five, instead of twenty-five minutes, should be two five oh seven. There's a seven-dollar difference once the hard copy came in. And then a change order two oh seven, that added seventy-one twenty-nine, not seven oh fifty-seven. I think that probably also was a typo on my part, do I have to repeat?
Okay, I think I missed that meeting. For number two oh six, isn't that something we have approved already?
Yes, that's part of the Penn Lake line down Fifth Avenue. This is the last piece of that project where we ran into all the vaults in front of St. Mary's Church, and they had to reroute and restructure how they were going to cross the connective.
Yeah, I think originally you guys approved like ninety-eight hundred, something like that. But we knew there was more coming, so this is a bit old now that we actually got all the way across to Mandel and it was that Sixth Avenue. And that, actually, that change order started out at thirty-seven, three forty-eight. We worked on it, went back to the contractor, it came down to thirty-three, three ninety-four. Went up and then again, Clark Hill like is very good at working with us to cooperate. We got it down to thirty-one, nine forty, and we finally wound up at twenty-seven, nine fifty-three. So we wrote shape, I think ran off of that, so we're not rotating these things to say on three.
We definitely appreciate that. Any other questions, go ahead and say.
We didn't get, at least I didn't see, what, whose at fault for these systems? Is that true, if you put that out?
I probably didn't catch that. I can go through real quick. Repair circuits was not documented. That's an unforeseen issue. Cabling for the kitchen, there should have been additional cabling that wasn't in the architectural design. We requested another drop to put in. Unsuitable soils is unsuitable soils. It's unforeseen conditions. Modifications would be an architectural error. It was designed the way it had to be changed because of when they got into the ground. Unsuitable soils, same thing, unforeseen condition. Quartz tile is, it's an add, and it's because of the area. We had to make a decision whether we were going to terrazzo the area in that addition to the cafeteria or we were going to go quartz tile.
Was it an omission, or, you know, did we know it was here to be there, or?
That was an error, no omission.
It's an error, no omission on a part of the architect that should have been in there.
Right.
And we had to make the decision in facilities whether we went with the quartz tile or with the terrazzo, when the facilities committee opted to go with the quartz tile.
So a four thousand dollar difference between the two.
Right.
It was in the industry in terrazzo, and it was a former storeroom, so it was a bare concrete.
But I figured it's just an omission, we had to make it anyhow. It's what the mission is, right?
Right.
I take it in all of a sudden you need to look here at the other place.
Okay, also on unsuitable soils, on your change order number two oh four, the description calls that out as ten by ten by two and a half foot deep. Looking at that a little bit farther, the tiling is a little bit incorrect. There was two different locations on that. We had to pump it up at a hundred and twenty-five dollars just in fill material. There were nine yards of lean concrete, twelve hours of G C time, ten tons of stone, and six hundred and thirty dollars just in equipment. So there was a ten by ten by two and a half, and a four by ten by three foot. They had to show them before we could get the correct base to build them.
I do have a little question. When we get all these change orders, but I haven't got that many questions or approvals from you. So these are not underway yet?
These aren't, all of these changers, except for the twenty-seventh, which was a part of previous project, and the last one, which is the only new one on the list, all these changers were approved by the committee, and then they proceeded after that.
So you sent all these out to us?
We went over it with the committee.
Oh, it did?
It's the facilities committee.
They're not quite done, so let's go over it.
I didn't send it out, we approved it in trail, it was very much part of the meeting. I did send out the phone out with drops.
Right.
Any other comments or questions about the changers? And so we're sitting at, the change order total is one point five million dollars. So we have eight hundred grand left over, right?
We should have a little more than that because over the last few months, for August and September, there were some change orders approved that were our estimated costs. And we're getting hard copies in that, and on those now. Looking at less than what our estimates were.
Okay, good. And so we're looking at another, I don't know, a little under a year left in the project. So does it look good as far as, you know, that's there, compared to what you have left over?
I do say that, I hope so. I mean, you know, as far as the simple soils, we're winding down on that, but we still have to deal with what's underneath this building. Okay, and there were like thirty-two wars that were taken. Twenty-seven of them were on that site, five were on this site, around the table. So there were wars, they knew that there was some simple soil, they just didn't know the way to scale. And it's not a matter of the soil being dirty or ugly, or whatever the case is. It's something that can't reach the required compassion. And we don't want walls and floors crap down the road.
Are we still on for our board?
Yes. We're going to be able to get you up there, Ray.
Thank you.
Get y'all there on the third floor.
All right, well, Wayne's got a strong back.
Which one's that?
And so one of the buildings is just ahead of schedule, and one of them is just behind the schedule, right?
Actually, the A-gobbing is pretty much on time. We were behind on the addition, we're at that point now. Actually, the district's been good, it just needs some of the third and fourth classes early. We're going to show over three rooms, we're going to work on two weeks, yeah, in two weeks. We'll get two more rooms for two weeks, and then we'll jump into another bank of three. And that's all we're scheduled for actually next summer. So overall, where do you need to be on that site? The new rebuilding, it looks rough on paper. It's showing that we're still kind of paper. But as I explained before, there's some areas that were way ahead, some areas are way behind. It's just the way the activities are tied together on the schedule on paper. But all over where we need to be. They're pretty new window frames right now. We have a painting coming in two weeks, so just start getting the class in. And we're hoping to close September, close by the end of October. I'm already hanging drywall on the third floor now. They're forming the tiered seed areas in the auditorium Friday and Monday. Got the stage board, and we're going to start working on the way out of the building. What's left, what's left? So we're doing great, guys.
Can't wait. Any others? All right, thank you, sir. Hey, we'll need a roll call on the approval of this construction change order, please.
Mrs. Breen, no. Mr. Seigler?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
No.
Mr. Hippo?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Mrs. Irwin Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
No.
Mr. Cruz?
No.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. President, go ahead and minute.
Yes, sir.
All right. My question is this, the meeting we had on the ninth, it was brought up about liability if we didn't approve these. And I was pleased to see, now I don't know if it's, I read it in the Alton Mirror. Mr. Cruz had said he will not vote in a way that, what's the school district, that a financial risk? I'm asking, is that true? Mr. Cruz.
Did I make that statement? That would be a true statement.
I'm asking if it was true.
Yes, it is a true statement.
Okay, because we all know the board makeup is going to change soon. And we heard from Carl at the last meeting that there would be a financial risk for not fulfilling the contract. So I am, I guess my question is, if people are going to end up voting yes whenever the board changes to get the project completed for our financial obligation, and once again, Dave brought it up, people can vote their way. But what I'm asking is, if we know the board's going to change, and people are going to have to vote yes in order to fill that obligation, so the contractors are paid and we don't have any financial liability, I'm just wondering why we're still coming down in October to a five-four vote every time.
So you're going to have it until December?
Okay, well, at least I'm comfortable knowing that people will change their vote when the board is a different makeup. That was my point, I was just glad to hear that, and thank you for your support, Ed.
That was pretty, didn't I tell you months ago, when you were asking for approval, if you couldn't get hold of one of these two guys to keep the project moving, I would be a yes.
Yes, right. I didn't know that. I'm just glad you for your support, thank you.
I'm not going to put the school in a legal battle, either it's Dave or Sharon or Ron. But you got us into a jam with this school. So until we change the board and are able to make cuts to help the budget, we're going to say no.
I'm glad that's clarified, thank you.
All right, on the concepts of the agenda, go ahead and motion please.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper, allow a second. Thank you, Mr. Hippo. And actually, let's go ahead and do those three items that we just added, that way we get them out of the way.
Okay. One will be under personnel. Added to this motion is increasing the substitute custodial starting wage to ten dollars an hour and rising to eleven dollars an hour after ninety working days. Second, increase our LPN salary rate from nineteen dollars and six cents an hour to nineteen dollars and fifty-six cents an hour. And the R ends from twelve twenty-seven to R to twelve seventy-seven, and now?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, sorry, thank you, twenty-two seventy-seven R, twenty-two twenty-seven, sorry, thank you.
Any comments or questions about those? Okay, item A of list payments, comments or questions?
I do.
Well, actually, I saw this at a pretty first, so.
I just have a question, check one-one-one, this is for Doug, six-five-six, electric tree shrub.
Yes.
Do we use up for that also, or like that's all we?
They were successful bidder for all the lawn care type activities.
But don't we put trees out the bid, or no, or is this?
Oh, no, this is like the, like the low bushes out here by the moat wall, and all the bushes around, all the bushes around the elementaries.
And that's not an hourly thing, like I thought we had, was the old company an hourly type pay?
I'm sorry?
The old company we had, did we pay them by the hour?
No, but they're actually on a schedule, I don't know for the trees, but for grass cutting, for example, they're on a schedule for seventy dollars for each location, so as they cut, they bill against that. We kind of issued it in one big package, but since I've been here, we've never gotten to the amount that we've allocated for those things.
The other thing I'd say is, I wish we could use a better tech war for Supreme. We spend a lot of money in Zet printer.
All right, Mrs. Breen.
I have just a couple of questions. One, check number one-one-one four-one-five, AKJ Education, A A H S Reading Workshop, twelve thousand, seven forty-four sixty-eight. And then there's several of them here for, I guess it's Heinmann. Libraries for Junior Gap Logan, Colle Fights, and another reading workshop for the junior high. Is this going to be an annual purchase, or do these last for several years? It's not annual, it's a one-time.
It is a one-time for those classrooms. We will have to supplement smaller numbers of books, but not full libraries.
Okay, and did we purchase them last year, or didn't we purchase them last?
Yes, for our early adopters last year. This is the last wave that elementary is all in, and it's the last purchase for elementary. Same with high school, and then we'll have a couple for the junior high for next year.
Okay. And then the other question I had was Greater Career in Technology. Check number one-one-one seven-two-one is paying us for the HSA employer contribution. So I know they're on our insurance, so they, along with their premium, they're paying us for the contribution that we make to their employees' HSA accounts?
We reimburse them for that, for what they pay their employees, and that's part of what we figured, what we calculated into their premium. And while when we calculate their costs, it includes what they pay their employees for the HSA upfront contribution.
So the premium includes that, and then we pay them, and they make the contribution. Correct. Okay. And capital lease monthly payment, I think I should know what that is online, is that the joint that happens?
Oh, that's Greater Career in Technology. That's the improvement that this G A C T C did in every school district that this pays, and G A C T C pays that annual fee, and it's another year, two years?
I think it's two, but I'll have to look. Okay, it's not part of our monthly offering, it's separate. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on item A? Item B, financial reports, anyone? Okay, item C, S D A bus drivers. D, environmental literacy and data total questionnaire. E, Glenn and Mercy University affiliation agreement. Sorry if I said that wrong. F, Learn Law Agreement. G, Family Services M O U. H, Junior Elementary Student Council Account. I propose changes to student evaluation system and student code conduct. K, Big Brothers Six Sisters. K, Secondary Conference Request. L, Contracted Services Honor. M, Parents Organizations and Fine Arts. N, help again Nurse Contracted Services. O, Junior High's Last Excrimination Team. P, Junior High Diversity Club. Q, First Training Party Day Review.
We got a question.
Good.
Can I write down to you that the school resource officers, you want to check that they're reading late?
We don't have S R Os?
No, we have school police and we have security officers.
R, A S D Board Policy Final Rating. S, Blair County Repository. T, Volunteers. U, Mentors. D, Elementary Field Trips. W, Secondary Field Trips. X, Blair County Tax Collection.
I have a question.
F.
I'm just asking it to be explained with how that is with, with a C student degree on it. Is that just our committee to try to collect taxes?
It's our representatives to the Blair County Tax Report.
For passing, for any taxes, for any. And we always add that?
Yes.
They've met with us at these places, correct? We met in there with them one day, correct?
That's something different.
That's something different. You're thinking of, you're thinking of legal for a session.
Yes.
That's not the Blair County.
All right.
I agree, I have a problem with this report, though. Do we have any change here?
Yes, we had a retirement, we need a replace.
Oh, I have a policy change as a person.
No.
Yeah, Dr. Great, tell us enough, the, 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 and then I was trying to buy the first thing, and then Kim was the only one who she was.
So I have a petition.
So are you retiring on the third?
Any other comments on X? Great. Y, any of the convention conference? C, tax collection agreements?
Are there questions? Of these agreements, which of these agreements are all are a result of us maintaining the tax office as opposed to changing the way we control the tax rates, tax correction in the business?
All of these are, all of these are our cooperative agreements with these organizations to help them and assist them in collection of capital, et cetera, and solve it through our tax office.
And, so, please?
I think we need to, especially the per capita taxes, that we are collecting the living township and losing money on it upfront, how they claim that with the past due taxes that they're actually making money, I don't know, I've never seen those figures, but I definitely think that should go to the Blair County Tax Collection Bureau, because they can put it right on the return that everyone found for that, as we can, just add it on as a column and collect it there, and it would be so much simpler, it would take work away from our tax office, and I think we really need to explore and see how many taxes we can turn back over to the Blair County Tax Collection Bureau.
Somebody, please keep an eye on the ceiling, I agree a hundred percent, Sharon.
Any others?
So where does the Blair County Tax Office located at?
Is it in Montecarlo?
They do, they used to be in Alton. Not in Montecarlo.
Do these have to be approved tonight?
Yes, because this is setting up for the, the county tax collection season, which is going to start December or January?
January. Well, then we could hold off until the new board is seated to vote on this.
We require ninety days, there's ninety days notice required to the municipalities.
What happens if we don't give them the ninety days notice?
There's a month, not anymore.
Well, then we can deal with that, and if I think it should be pulled and held for the new board. Because once it's locked in, it's too late.
Well, Mr. Hippo already pulled that one, correct?
I pulled for September, I think she talked about pulling it all together, I don't know. I just want there to be an honest to God evaluation of what we are doing at tax office, because in, in my view, it is such a rarity that a school district even has that type of operation. Whether we make money or we break even, to me, it's a dinosaur of the past, it was a testament to egos of the past, it's not necessary, and it's not about education to me. We're here putting our time, money, and effort into educating kids, it should not be in the operation of an office where, I think I asked Carl one time, if any of these other districts even had an office, and I thought the answer was no, couldn't think of one. To me, our efforts should be toward education of our kids, not collecting taxes.
Any other comments or questions on that?
Just took a look, Sharon, I'd like to have a new, new board, Mr. Grant. Look into it a little more.
I think the whole thing should be pulled till even if this board researches it, but I think we need to research it some.
I don't think we should have a tax office.
Well, the board wants to, wants to vote to dissolve the tax office, that action has to be pretty much done tonight, so we can tell the people who, who we do service for, and we do make money on the per capita, because it doesn't cost us anything if we send it out with our per capita, it's just quite simply printing it on the same card. So there's a savings of, of time and effort. I will say this, there are issues with the tax office and the board of the tax office being willing to accept additional responsibilities. I have discussed this with the tax office, it's a, of the Blair County Tax Office, because in, I ran the numbers myself as to what it would take to do the transition, and what they would want to collect real estate taxes, capital tax, all those kinds of things. And while, yes, we have an investment, at that time, we had an investment of approximately sixty thousand dollars over what it would cost to outsource it to them, I understand you are giving up control of the revenue source.
Just like every other district in the county does.
Every other district in the county has tax law.
And the Blair County Tax Collection Office has done an excellent job.
The Blair County Tax Office has, does not collect real estate taxes.
But they can collect the majority of these taxes here. Then maybe we need to communicate with other districts to see how they're doing it without a tax office. I, I think it's something we absolutely need to look into, and I think Susan just said, if we don't give them any day notice, we are on a month to month. So I, I don't see why it has to be done right now, tonight.
I'm depending, Senator, on Friday, the eleventh, sponsored by Kazbo, that talks about tax collection in the school districts. I can bring back information at that point in time and present that with the next Cal or the next, I believe, you will.
We can add, we can add either, we can add either finance or the Cal.
I make a motion to table until at least next month's meeting.
I second it, but until January, December.
You'd have to second the motion that's currently on the table.
And I'll second yours, Ed. I'll second that.
So we have the motion with Mr. Hurst, and we have a second with Mr. Francis. Okay, so roll call.
Clarify the vote, please, this is on the motion table, next one, three. And I'm assuming the question is standing, we'll report back.
Right, I'd like someone to look into it, and she's more than that meeting, and yes, my SEO. If we shouldn't even be in the business.
Mr. Segler.
Yes.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Mr. Hippo.
Yes.
Mr. Hoover.
Yes.
Mrs. Irwin Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Mr. Cruz.
Yes.
Mrs. Breen.
Yes.
Mr. Brennan.
No, I think we should have done this long ago, if we're going to do it. So the motion carries and is stable, which will supersede removing. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on to item AA, establishing a student club. Item BD, budget adjustment. CC, tax appeal. DD, Interscholastic Unified Sports Memo on Understanding, and a whole lot of other words. Okay, so, there are no items that are currently removed from this, so all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. No items under default business, we'll move on to new business, capital reserve list of payments, go ahead, motion please.
No move.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover, allow a second. Thank you, Mr. Hippo. Comments or questions on this? Okay, all those in favor?
Let me just be clear here.
Yes.
So we're just making a payment on the tennis courts, but not something?
This is the final payment, we have a, we have a maintenance bond on the courts, to ensure that they are, that all warranty, warranty repairs are taken care of in the spring.
Any other comments or questions?
We're going to go to these always one.
If you want to break one out, you can, so just let me know which one to break out.
Right.
With?
I'm going to be.
Oh, okay, that's the case, it's fine, yeah. I'm just saying you're entitled to pull it, if you wanted to.
I'd like to make a point here, because I don't think, I don't know if we got to this in the facilities committee, a level of softball field, this is a payment to the CTC for all the materials to build the, the two dugouts, okay? That's, that's all this is, this is a payment to reimburse them for the materials for the block, for the mortar, for the shingels, for the wood, et cetera, doors.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Francis.
No on the tennis courts.
Mr. Hippo.
Yes.
Mr. Hoover.
Yes.
Mrs. Irwin Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Johnston.
I'm going to know on the tennis courts also.
Mr. Cruz.
I'm going to know on the feasibility study on the roof and on the tennis courts.
Mrs. Breen, no on the tennis courts. Mr. Segler.
Yes.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Unanimous on everything except the tennis courts, or against the tennis courts, five for it, and one against the feasibility study on Pennington.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, item B, do I have a motion, capital project list of payments?
No move.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover, allow a second. Thank you, Mr. Hippo, comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hippo.
Yes.
Mr. Hoover.
Yes.
Mrs. Irwin Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Johnston.
No.
Mr. Cruz.
No.
Mrs. Breen, no. Mr. Segler.
Yes.
Mr. Francis.
No.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mrs. Five-four.
Item C, personnel, with the addition that Dr. Great told earlier, or did you?
I volunteer girl soccer coach for the Altamere Junior High School, two thousand nine and two thousand twenty school year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hoover, allow a second. Thank you, Mr. Hippo, comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item D, Hills Carnes, Carnes, I would say that high school construction, do I have a motion, please?
No move.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover, allow a second. Thank you, Mr. Hippo, comments or questions?
Could someone explain what this is?
Hills Carnes is the company that does all of the, all of the brick testing, they also do all the analysis on unsuitable soils, they handle all of our, all of our construction quality control, is the floor by the floor is flat, et cetera, is everything done to code, that's their, that's their job.
So this is basically a change order?
This is, this is an adjustment of soft costs to increase their budget to ensure that they can oversee the completion of the project.
That's basically a change order.
You could call it that, yes, it's a change order.
The initial purchase order of Hills Carnes was underneath the soft cost budget line, so this just brings it up. So costs came in higher than the testing, individual testing came in higher than their estimate, primarily due to the large quantity of unsuitable soil.
So are you saying that essentially it's still in the budget that we had, but we're increasing the cost that's a lot to it?
The, the specific line item was two hundred and fifty thousand for the soft cost budget, their initial purchase order was one hundred and ninety-seven thousand and change, so this takes in about seventy thousand over that particular line item.
Is there any reason that it came over, did it give any reason to? Yeah, does that mean like?
But I had, I, the, the, help me duck it here, the, the, the testing was based on expectations for a normal job, because ours had, but it's a per testing cost, so every time they test the concrete, every time they test the soils, every time they look at a floor, it's a different line item fee, so we exceeded the number of base estimated tests.
As, as they get into unsuitable soils, they'll, they'll excavate some, they'll pull, when they get something that looks good, they'll take a sample, if it's still not good, they have to take another sample, et cetera, et cetera, as they proceed through.
Okay, thanks.
So they did all the soil in this area also, did I hear our construction guys say they tested this?
Well, there, no.
They only did five testings.
Yeah, there's two parts, Mountain Research did the first, test borings on all of the foundation lines, where they virtually found no unsuitable soils in that footprint. Hills Carnes, they're just during construction, testing to make sure that, that the ground can be compacted and hold the, have the load bearing that's required.
So we're going to be making more payments than these guys, correct? We might, after this place gets tore down, if they, if they have to do more tests.
This seventy thousand dollars is an estimate that came in from roads, and they included testing of this building, their estimates, I mean, I.
But they also included testing, they're there, and they're off by seventy thousand, so we're beginning off by here.
Well, I, I, well, that's, I, I don't know the answer to that, it's an estimate.
Doug, the five borings were around the.
The five borings that Mountain Research did was over at the eight building extension.
I thought they said they did something here.
No.
I thought he did too, I thought.
Yeah, when he said it, I, he said on this side.
Yeah.
I thought he meant here.
This side of the avenue, I.
I thought it was here, because I didn't see how they were doing here with the building.
Right.
I didn't know if they were doing the basement or what.
Are, are we going to have to go through, like, I mean, is it, is that going to be as much of an issue over here, since they're dropping this and crushing everything down?
I don't really think they are, I mean, what's, what's key over there is, is you put your columns in, that's supporting all the floors above, and so you have a lot of concentrated load there. Over here, you're only going to have a field that you need to support, so the standards will be lower. I don't even know what's in their contract to, to test for on the, the B building site.
Okay, so it has to do with the weight, or not, or field?
Right.
This building used to have an auto shop in it.
Absolutely.
So is there oil underneath the ground in this building?
Probably.
I don't know if that would be a Hills Carnes thing or more of a Mountain Research.
Right, it's going to run into, I'm sure.
If you find something suspicious, shit, you, yeah, you'll have to test it.
Any other comments or questions on this one?
You don't have one, Mr. President. So, so far with contaminated soil, according to Mr. Marshall, it's concrete bricks and rebar. Okay, thank you. If you're at it, are you asking what makes it, what constitutes unsuitable soils? No, no, ask, I asked before, what is, it was contaminated soil, Mr. Marshall told me before, a year ago, it was concrete, rebar, and bricks, so they reworded it, unsuitable soil, so it's the same, it's just. Well, unsuitable soils can be concrete, basically a buried foundation, it can be bricks, an impeded foundation, it can also be someone buried an out, and as it deteriorated, it created an unstable soil, it had to be removed, and a quality fill had to be put in its place. So unsuitable soils is remnants or other things that you'd find on a site. When they tear this building down, they, when they tear this building down, they might run into an issue, but the thing is going to be, it's going to negate a chunk of that is not building another building on top of it. It's not like they have to worry about whether it's compactable to a certain extent, because it's going to be the IM field, and if you remember, the IM field over there is where we were dealing with all the unsuitable soils. Well, to build a building, you have to have a much higher tensile strength ability to sustain the weight, you're not going to have that here with an intermediate field. So it's, it, the, the biggest issue I would be concerned about on this site would be, would be hazardous material. So it's, the biggest issue I would be concerned about on this site would be, would be hazardous materials such as asbestos, et cetera. And yes, there may be some residual oil, et cetera. At the same time, if you get an occupancy permit to convert these into classrooms, there would have been a certain level that had to be handled and abated at that time. But then again, that was what, forty years ago? Let me make that shift. Bronston came down to seventy-four, correct?
Yeah.
I think I.
March.
Okay.
All right, any other comments or questions on this one? Let's get a roll call, please.
Mr. Hoover.
Yes.
Mrs. Irwin Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Johnston.
No.
Mr. Cruz.
No.
Mrs. Breen.
No.
Mr. Segler.
Yes.
Mr. Francis. Mr. Hippo.
Yes.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Five four.
Okay, moving on to item E, A H S furniture. Go on a motion, please. Thank you, Mr. Hippo, go have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover. I'm just going to ask you quick questions here since I'm talking. The withdrawn bid, what was the reason for the withdrawn bid?
They, they miscalculated and they could not be, and they could not be held to them, they quoted us.
Okay, that's all, thanks. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Only two companies bid on the furniture.
Three actually bid, the third company had the error and when they got done with the error, they were unlocked, to, to make the adjustment that they were no longer the low bidder. Because they were actually the low bidder at nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand, I believe was the number. But when, when they corrected their math error, it put them a hundred, it one million fifty, approximately.
Any other comments or questions?
The, the very bottom that says somebody's coming out of the capital project, is that still the school loan? For fifty-one thousand?
Yeah, that's the building.
Okay, so.
I just have a question. So teacher has a favorite desk, a lot of drawers. Can, is she allowed to take this over to the new school? Or is it mandatory to have new furniture?
I, the furniture that we're purchasing is for mostly the B building, there are teacher desks though for the entire project, A M B here. For the sake of uniformity and upgrades, we are, my, my direction's going to be, we use the new furniture that we're purchasing today. The new rooms have, the renovated room in the A building as well as the B building rooms have way more storage, they have built in cabinetry, built in casework. Teachers have way more storage now, the ones that have moved into the new rooms in the A building already than what they ever did. So cabinets and things like that are not going to be necessary, we have built in, built in areas for materials, personal items, all of it.
So what you're saying is the old furniture's not going to blend in and it's a no-no and.
I, I mean, there is old furniture that we're going to.
Desk and chair with me.
There are old pieces of furniture that we're going to use, we're, like we've said before, we're going to take the best of the best, outfit the A building. But, yeah, I mean, it's part of its aesthetic, I mean, obviously we have a brand new building, it's going to be, you know, a nice space, we don't want to have stuff that doesn't fit the, you know, hip use of decor, I guess. So, yeah, we want it to look nice for the, for the public, for the students, for the teachers, we want it to be inviting and modern looking, I mean, that's what we're going for, so, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all. Any others? Okay, I guess we need a roll call, please.
Mrs. Irwin Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Johnston.
No.
Mr. Cruz.
No.
Mrs. Breen.
No.
Mr. Segler.
Yes.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Mr. Hippo.
Yes.
Mr. Hoover.
Yes.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Six three.
Okay, so we have some information on many items, is there anybody want to say about those?
The standard, so the committee summary, payment of credits, it's a contractual obligation, capital project list payment, the standard, maybe the board aware, policy committee meeting minutes, we had policy committee earlier this month. We went over a lot of different pieces and, and also then the policy review and where we are. And if the policy review, that's the title, title one, parent involvement policy that needs to be reviewed every year. We sent that out to committees and the parents in all the buildings who were on those committees reviewed that and there were no changes, so it just needs to be certified as they had been reviewed.
All right, any other comments or questions on those? All right, unions or some laws, I don't see anybody. Mental management? Thank you, non-solicitor.
No, important.
Thank you. And I just do want to throw this out there, we've got our annual report, it's wonderful, we put together, it's lovely. Get a copy of it, it's a lot worth a read, there's all kinds of wonderful stuff in here. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
You know it.
Thank you.